Call the work session to order. Good morning to everyone.
Good morning.
I hope everyone had a nice, warm weekend. Got to get out, do yard work and all that kind of stuff. Ah, did we have anyone sign a public?
No sir.
Okay. We will have a character word of the month. I don't know what it's going to be yet. Do we know what it's going to be?
No, I asked them.
Cameron, Cameron Wright is going to tell us what it is, so that'll be fine.
It can be one of four words.
Okay.
They have one a week.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Okay. We have the minutes of the commission meeting on March 3rd, 2015, the work session on March 2nd, 2015, the executive session minutes on March 2nd, 2015. Please review those before tomorrow's vote. We have a couple of proclamations. I've just had four. A proclamation proclaiming the week of March 22nd through 28th, 2015, as Boys and Girls Club Week in Douglas County. John Sale will be here to read that proclamation. Well, Mark Derry Stansel will be here tomorrow to proclaim March 21st, 2015, as Master Gardener Day in Douglas County. County administrative business, I'll turn it over to Mark.
We have some merit system changes that are proposed by Personnel Review Board. I have said only one. But it's concerning retirement benefits and it's the ones that are under the rule of eighty. So what has been done in the past, under the rule of eighty, once you retire, the employee's been allowed to purchase healthcare benefits up until he, for death. And, and for the dependents, sorry. So for himself or herself and the dependents, up until the previous employee dies. And then they were no longer offered to the, to the dependents. And this proposal is, from the Personnel Review Board, would allow the dependents to carry on our health benefits after the death of the employee.
Okay. This has been recommended by our Personnel Review Board. Yes, sir. All right, any comments or questions?
Do we have an idea of cost difference? Because that's, that's atypical.
I think right now, if my memory is certainly correct, there's about fifty employees that are retired under the rule of eighty. And as far as the cost, it would depend on what's your medical expenses cost.
Sheriff Chris, what we have to appreciate is the fact that we're self-insured. Etno, group costs, and then I'm paying the doctors bills. The county and the taxpayers are paying, so I'd like more discussion. How's this, how's this compared to, you know, industry large and other governments? Can we look at that?
I don't think anybody covers, covers people and dependents after the death of the employee. This is not something we've done in the past, and I don't think it's something we should do in the future.
That's my concern. I mean, would be compassionate, but...
Oh, yes, it would. You'd love to do it, but you're right, the taxpayer is picking up the tab. Yes, ma'am?
Well, under the Affordable Care Act, can, can they not get healthcare with some help from the government? They have to...
I don't really answer that question. I don't answer that either.
And this is pre-Medicare.
Yes, that's correct.
So once Medicare kicks in, then it would be covered by Medicare. These are retired people, but I don't think this is done anywhere.
I don't know anywhere.
Unless it's Fortune 500 company or something.
No, I can't agree.
No, I don't think so as well. So it'll be on the, it'll be on the agenda to go to up or down.
Ours is tax dollars.
Yeah.
Different.
Well, you know, I think what we do now is we cover the dependents for like thirty days and make it longer than that.
Yes, sir.
Thirty days. And that gives them time to, to go out and get their insurance elsewhere. But again, this is, I don't know if anybody who does this can provide insurance for employees. And some have dependents and some don't. So once the employee is deceased, taxpayers can't pick up the tab for dependents. It's my, it's my position.
Yeah, it's your...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's, it just makes me think, you know, to your point, are we setting a precedent? I mean, I think the benefits lie with the employee. I mean, that's the base. I know there's certain industries that extend things, you know, beyond life. And I don't know how the military works or not in the military, how that works either. But it's just, you know, I think we have a pretty decent retirement program, to be very honest. And I think this, we're probably crossing the line here. We're extending it too far. I think things have to be, you know, be kept in boundaries. And so for this one, I'm probably a little bit less likely to support it.
Yes, I would just like to see some numbers, but I think it should be a, a, a more of a discussion first before up or down votes. I don't know if it's something that we want to vote. I think it's just something of discussion so we can all get a clear understanding of what they, what the numbers are, correct? Maybe it is. I doubt it.
I don't think there's a number out there that you can tell how many dependents they're going to have and how long they're going to live.
And, 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 right, but there's, there's, there should be at least an estimate, you know, that we can kind of get a gauge. And I don't think it's going to be a realistic number, but I think at least it's worth discussing first than the up or down vote. But my thing would be to go back and, you know, revisit it before it gets on the agenda for up or down vote. That would be just my recommendation. At least have some discussion on it before we decide to vote on it.
My recommendation, we do pull it from the agenda. It's what my opinion...
Well, that's what we recommended, we pulled it from the agenda and have a discussion if we so choose of not pull it from the agenda and keep moving. At least a discussion.
I would...
Yes, sir.
You know, I wouldn't, no, I wouldn't disagree per se. I mean, this came as a recommendation, rather, for, you know, Personnel Review Board, right, which has its own independent, you know, how it's, how it stands. So I think there was some due diligence around that, but I think this is not even about money, in my opinion, right? It just simply becomes, should we even do it? You know, I, I think it's, I don't have to quantify it. If in fact, we've already looked at, from a policy perspective, we really should extend this to dependents beyond the life of the actual employee. So, no, I can't go any further. I don't have to look at the numbers. If we're just a pure policy, that's enough, right? We've already sort of, we've already sort of, we can quantify what we do today as relates to our current employees, because we know what those are. But it's one of those where I'm just, I'm cautious, is that are we giving information just to be getting it? Or are we, I mean, I guess I want to double back on Commissioner Mitchell's point. Are we table, are we asking to table it or are we just looking to take it off altogether? Those are two separate things for me.
Oh, my, my suggestion would be to pull it from the agenda.
I agree.
Anybody have anything on it?
I agree.
All right. Thank you for that. Okay. Oh, county administrators still. This one's here.
Uh, number seven is authorize the chairman to execute an employment agreement for the new human resources director.
Okay.
And we had a committee consisting of Mr. Peacock, Chief Spencer, myself, Commissioner Robinson, and the chairman, and we interviewed five very good candidates. And then the final recommendation to the board was to go with Mr. Fred Perry, who is currently the HR Director for the city of Douglas County.
And we did have some very good candidates here, the top five. Each of those five could have done a good job of, 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 by the committee to hire Fred. Okay. Comments, questions? All right. Under tab eight, authorization for the chairman to execute an employment agreement with Martell for the position of county administrator. And again, it's, we're fortunate, Douglas County, that we have people who can step up within the organization and fill the jobs. I think just a testament of the kind of type of employee we do have, of the candidates that applied for this job, the top candidates who are already employees in Douglas County, to be truthful. Okay? Any comments, questions?
Yes, a quick question, a quick remark.
Yes.
You're absolutely correct. We've got good bench strength, but that's not something that just happens. I think we're playing that bench strength and looking for it. Now, for example, Mark's sensibly becoming out of the Development Services Director. Who are we going to get to replace him? And who are we looking at to replace that person? And that's, that's a minimum, how far we need to look down, look down the road. And I, I feel we probably have somebody that could, right now, fill that position. My personal opinion, but it's always about bench strength, two, three spaces down the line. And so that's not something that just happens by accident.
No, that's, that's a good point, Commissioner, and, and you're absolutely right. We do have someone in place to fill Mark's position downstairs. We probably may or may not have to hire another different individual downstairs. We all know that Tim Hussey is retiring as well, and we have someone in place there as well. So we're going to be waiting for Mark. One of his first duties as this county administrator will be to bring a reorganizational chart for all of these departments that we're talking about. But we do have good people in place, and we're very fortunate. And like Mr. Mollke said, that didn't, didn't just happen. We've had some good hiring. Yes, sir?
That was exactly my point, which is this probably is a good time to look at the organization and see what, you know, the vice chairman's point even today as well as tomorrow.
Yes.
Who's really going to go with this? And I know Mark is a, has a different perspective than part of our administrators, so Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, you have a chance. He just want to take us forward.
Yes, that's true. Yes, ma'am?
I was just about to say that, you know, Mark has been serving as our interim county manager, and I've been very pleased personally with his performance. He's a, he's a follow-through person. You bring something up to him, and he doesn't just let it fall to the wayside. And I really like that. Plus, he gives us a report every Friday of ongoing things, and I appreciate that. Because with the various committees that the chairman assigns, you know, not all of us are aware of what's going on in some matters. So it kind of keeps us surprised at what's going on. And I think he's going to be great.
As a closer, so we are going to get this reorganizational chart from Mark, and I've had a chance to sit down and talk, so I think that's a great, wonderful idea to kind of do that part of it. Budget-wise, how are we going to, if there's a possibility of savings or with everything else, or Mark want to comment on the mere fact of dollars in a sense budgetary-wise, where we look like once we make all these moves?
I think it'll be savings.
Okay.
But we still got to go through that process for the reorganizational chart and employees with decisions of whether we're going to replace or let them or not. Probably will be a saving.
So budget-wise, we'll kind of...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But again, I think we almost have to go back to your point, Mr. Chairman, we got to go through the process. In spite of the agenda of transportation all over, in spite of, you know, there's an expected push in other areas, we got to just relook at the whole organization and say, okay, what's really going to happen? Because we're about to get hit here to deliver against what the public is expecting. And so we just want to make sure we have, I know there may be savings in others, but there may be expansion in the others, because we, we're already at capacity. I don't think we got that much capacity that we can take some of the work on, as it's really being pushed. So we'll see.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Under tab nine, authorization to accept funds from the clerk of state court technology fund account in the amount of $1,080 to be used to purchase of a laptop at the state court judicial courtroom.
Jennifer's going to present.
Jennifer, you're going to do that.
Yeah, pretty much what you just said. I don't know what else to say. Any more detailed questions?
I was just asking, are there any questions?
Are there any questions?
Thank you so much. Number 10, authorization to include the optional software for jury management to the case management system agreement with Icon Software Corporation in the amount of $28,000 and authorize chairman to sign all related documents. Russ?
Hey, so as part of the, the case management software that we looked at with Judge Emerson, we asked all of the respondents to include a jury management module that we could look at using. As we looked at those, that was, so that was part of our evaluation, was the jury management modules that were part of the system. And as we looked at Icon, we agreed that they also had a jury management module that we would like to go with, but for budgetary purposes, we weren't able to include it in the original package of software. So it was dropped, and we decided not to purchase that module. Tammy can talk to how the budgetary things changed for them, but there is money available now to purchase this jury management module, and we would like to include it in the contract with Icon as part of the original contract, because it'll save us a significant amount of money. This $28,000 is actually a placeholder based on the fact that we bought it as a standalone product, the fact that we're bringing it in and making it part of the original contract. It'd be somewhere around 60% of what they're showing right here.
And the way we've got, oh, I've got money in my budget is because during the budget time, I told you we're going to have two death count cases this year. Well, one of those cases pled out two weeks ago, which is, saves a lot of money. So I can pull it off of the jury line that's there.
Okay. Did y'all discuss this in the text on what you committed?
No, we threw an email, like, I just wanted to ask.
Yes, ma'am.
Tammy, do explain to the public exactly what this does. Is it going to save you a lot of man-hours and redundancy and stuff like that?
Exactly. It will save a lot of, it'll be so much more efficient. Right now, when jurors come in, everything's done by hand. You sign in, you sit down, then we have to take off the 200 or something people that don't show up. We have to hand take them out of the computer. Then we have to wait till a jury, the judge excuses the ones that want to be excused. We have to hand take them out. Where this system has a barcode on the jury that summons, we'll have a little hand scanner. We'll scan them as they come in. It'll fix our list. We'll be ready to go. Court can start probably an hour earlier than what's happening now will be more modern, but it'll be very efficient for us.
Commissioner?
And, and closing though, but, okay, you said it'll be 60% of the number roughly, based on what we've already kind of committed to these guys.
Correct.
Okay. So the dollars still will be a saving there as well.
If we do it in.
Right, if we do it in, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Under tab 11, authorization to accept a check from the sheriff's office asset forfeiture account in the amount of $54,180 for the purchase of camera, camera equipment for our vehicles. Chief Cole.
Jennifer said, you said it off. We'll be, as you know, we'll be adding two traffic cars to the fleet, and this will cover the two cameras systems for them. And we're upgrading several more camera systems to the HD system. Many of our systems are really getting old now, that we purchased originally back in 2004, when video really started to move. Now it's just a requirement, so they've gone from analog to digital, and now this is digital HD. So it just really enhances the, the view from the patrol cars for our tags and what's going on. So this will take care of ten additional cameras to replace some of the old ones that had a few minutes.
Tell the sheriff we appreciate it, provide the money to purchase those.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Question, chief, quick question. I know we've had conversations, you know, offline about, you know, cameras on vests and so forth. But do you, do you ever think that there'll come a time, you know, we talk about general savings, where we could have cameras that are looking at streets and that we lease or we oversee from a law enforcement perspective, from a different perspective? In other words, we don't need any officers on the street because we're using technology to see. In other words, I know in certain parts of country, they have it in downtowns or in certain areas, and they use that more as a monitor, and if they see things, do you ever think we'll get to that, or is that just too much oversight? That's too much power?
No, I, no, I think there's areas of the county that would really be great to have some more camera monitoring, you know, it will never take the place of the officers there. However, because most of the time, you have to go back and review what happened, but it's a great tool, particularly in your more areas, commercial areas, the Thorn Road area, right? Those that we would, and we've been looking at some grants to help with that, because that technology's there now.
Right.
It would still be something that would have to be manned at either the communications center, because these areas like City of Atlanta, they have a person who actually does the pan-tilt zoom and receive what's going on. Yes, sir, I think that's a, it's coming, and it really helps the street areas. There is no privacy issue because it's on the street and it's what's going on on the streets.
Right.
We would love to see that. It initially would be fairly expensive. After that, it would be fairly cheap to maintain it, so, which is part of the process now. By the way, these will also, these cameras, L3 Communication now is, for every camera system that's bought new, they are providing a body camera. So with these, we will get body cameras also, and we're in a testing phase to look at those. I don't know what the legislature's going to do. It got pushed out, I think it's in committee, but I don't think the state wants to come up and mandate something that they have to pay for. So once they mandate it, they have to...
Good point, good point.
Yeah, so, but it will, this is going to give us the ability to at least evaluate and see what those might do for the department.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, chief. Tab 12, authorization to submit a grant application for family dependency treatment court for funding cycle July 1st, 2015 through June 3rd, 2016. How are you?
This is just a request for us to be allowed to submit the application.
Okay.
I'm still working on numbers, but roughly $112,000 is what we're asking for. And the max would probably be about $12,500.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Thank you, ma'am.
Good job.
Thank you.
Under tab 13 and 14, Ms. Hollins.
Yes, these are just housekeeping items that we do once a year, once we close the fiscal year, December 31st. We did that last week. And anything that is legitimate purchase orders, meaning that they were not blankets, they were for particular projects or particular goods and services that were not purchased or received at the year end that roll over, we amend the budget, meaning that we give the money to the department in this year's budget. So we have that. That's item number 13 and 14. It's pretty much kind of the same thing. Instead of being encumbrances, it's anything that we had earmarked in the budget. Maybe that the project didn't get finished or completed, as well as any grants that maybe were received late in the year, that they didn't spend all of their grant funding, so we roll that over as well. It's no impact to fund balance. We have already reserved that when we closed this year to show those as being assigned at the year end. So this is just the housekeeping to get everybody's budget to where it needs to be, so it's, it washes out this year.
Okay, questions? Under tab 15, authorization to award contract to Hutter. Is that where you mentioned that, Bill?
Yes, sir.
Hutter's Integration Consulting for the preparation of a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan and authorize chairman to sign all related documents.
Yes, sir, this was done on behalf of the Emergency Management Operations Department of the county. We currently have a hazard mitigation plan. It needs updating. The scope of work is to update the local and regional plans, to update the mitigation goals and strategy, to identify projects that enable the county to prepare for and reduce the impacts of a disaster by having this mitigation plan in place. So we sent out a bid, we had, we had five companies submit proposals, we evaluated those, and we chose, we call them P and C, so we don't actually...
Good, good.
We call it P and C.
If we come up with something else for a multi-jurisdictional hazard, but yes.
You could ask Jason that question, but, but we're asking that you allow us to award the contract to that.
Okay, questions?
Jason's here for a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the amount? This is $19,055. Okay, I see it. Okay. It's my bad. That's okay.
Okay.
And they were below, below the overall project.
All right. Thank you, sir. Under tab 16, authorization to award contract to Sun Guard Public Sector, Inc., for the purchase of upgraded software for the E911 Department CAD system and authorize chairman to sign all related documents pending legal review. Mr. Peacock, you're up again.
Yes, sir. This system is to replace or update the existing AS400-based software. It's no longer maintained. We need these updates so that we can better use the CAD features, the new technology that's out there for dispatching. Many of these features will be necessary for the next generation E911 systems, and it also updates to the Windows version instead of the old AS400. This is a total price of $216,960 with an annual maintenance cost of $34,496. Again, this is our existing vendor, and any questions about the need for the new system can be addressed to Mr. Jason, Mr. Craig.
Questions?
I'd like to hear what he's got to say for that much money.
But I understand how brutal it is.
Well, CAD systems are like anything, especially in public sector, you get what you pay for. This vendor that we're using, HT Sun Guard, we've been using them since 1993. They've been our vendor. They've been there for software updates, any, any critical elements of the machinery, if we have failure, which knock on wood, we've not had one with the software, they've been there for us. What Bill's talking about with the AS400 platform is, y'all know that the AS department the past few years has been going away. And this, our current CAD is called the HD Chiefs. It's a Gooby-type software. It's a green screen, it's all line command keys, dispatchers physically have to type in command instructions on the lines to move around to process the calls, which takes time. Fire calls take a little longer, sheriff's department calls take a little longer. When we go to the Windows base, it's point click, add, fill in the line. Not only is it going to be greater references and resources for the dispatchers, what it does is it opens up what Bill described as the forthcoming technology, next generation I-11. Current CAD software won't do anything with next generation. Next generation, depending on who you talk to, you'll get different answers. But basically, in a nutshell, what it does is it allows an I-11 center to be a part of the information cycle and process. Caller's taking pictures, sending to us, hey, there's an armed robbery going on right now, chsh, and there's the car, here's what they look like. Now I can send it, now I'm with a picture on my camera. Now an I-11 gets this information, turns it and sends it to Stan, all his people, the police department, all their people, processes this information that quickly. But you've got to have systems in place for next generation. Another part of next generation is the State and EZNet and the governor's recommendations, that's the other part. But this has to be in place in order for us to do this. Scott's department, you know, somebody may cut themselves really badly or something or get an injury, they'll be taking a picture of that, sending it to us, we'll be able to send it to the people in the, on the ambulances and show them, here's what you're responding to. So now they know what to grab before they have to go in, but instead of going back to the truck or, it's just, it's going to open up, it's going to change the business the way we do I-11. It's going to make the I-11 first responders actually on the scene now, which is a whole other psychology we're going to have to deal with when that time comes. But this CAD system will open the door for us to be able to do that and allow us to continue. Again, it's the same vendor we've had since 1993. We just want to update the software with them. They've been there for all our needs, no complaints in all these years. If we need something, they've done it. And I'll be quiet and answer questions. I couldn't take the Jennifer client's address.
Ma'am?
Yes, I'd like to, um, does this come out of the I-11 fees?
Yes, ma'am, it's all I-11.
So it's not taxed, well, it's paid by the citizens?
Using fees from the I-11, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
What kind of a training timeline do you envision? What's learning curve?
The training, even, even in the demo that we had, when they came in to show us what the differences were going to be between the old and the new, the dispatchers were on it in about three hours, already taking calls and processing calls and just learning what all the features were, as they were already going through the fundamental call process, the call-taking process. They tell us anywhere from three, four days, and the training included in the price as well. But I was able to get on and actually, I haven't taken I-11 calls in a little while, and I was actually able to process I-11 calls along with dispatchers and the, and the presentation.
Yes.
It's going from, and the mapping features that this opens up is amazing, it's incredible. One of the other things that it does, and I'll touch base on that, is we have to be able to plot phase one and phase two I-11 calls. And there's, there's so much more technology that's added, that's interfaced into the CAD systems now than when the CADs came online in '93. When our CAD came online in '93, the current version we're using, there was no phase one using, there was no phase one and phase two nine one. There was no cell phones. So that's the leap that we've taken now, and our CAD software needs to catch up to the technology and take us into the next generation phase.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do wanna mention that there is a hardware component of this that we'll be bringing back to you guys later. We'll actually be bidding out some servers that are needed to, once they get the software installed. So we'll be bringing that back to you later.
Bill, I think the rest of the meeting, if you're...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Under tab seventeen, authorization to execute an addendum to the COT system master agreement for products and services on behalf of the clerk of courts for conversion of paper records into electronic form, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents.
Yes, sir. There are currently two projects pending within the clerk of courts office with COT. One is the history project we're talking about today, and there's another one called the back pile project. This current history, index history load is to take the paper, land records...
Deeds and records?
Okay. Take them from paper and scan them in and have them electronically available to the clerk's office so that they can be more efficient in their search for and location of these records. So the total cost is about fifty-eight thousand dollars for the first, for the first half that we're asking approval for today, and the dollars are being provided through...
Yes, sir. Y'all signed an agreement that I could keep the funds from the clerk's authority on a line item, so that'll pay for this one hundred percent. I've just been waiting to sign the agreement, 'cause I'm not gonna do it without the money. So we've always got the down payment saved up.
All right. Questions or comments? Under tab eighteen, authorization to execute a planned service agreement with Johnson Controls, Inc., on behalf of the Douglas County Boundary Waters Aquatic Center for an annual cost of five thousand three hundred dollars, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending legal review. It's something we do every year, Bill.
Yes, sir. Well, for the last several years, or last two years, we've not had Johnson Controls do the maintenance. We had them early on, once we opened the Boundary Water system. We went away from that. We had some cheaper alternatives. But now with the aging of the equipment, we're finding that it needs a more regular maintenance schedule. And Johnson Controls is very aware, very familiar with all the systems out at the Aquatic Center. So we've asked, we're asking you to allow us to enter into this annual maintenance agreement with them at a cost of fifty-three hundred dollars. And they'll do routine maintenance as well as come out and look for problems and try to correct them before they become problems, or look for situations before they become problems.
Question, comment?
Yeah.
All right, so for the non, for the layman person, what are we doing here?
Out of the...
What are they doing?
Out of the Aquatic Center, we have, we have tons of pumps and fans and chlorinators.
Do you need fire?
What else? Anything that operates a swimming pool, that you need to keep the pool clean, chlorinated, keep the warm, for those that need to be warming. The climate within the actual building, all of those things are controlled by a computer, if you will, assisted devices. And Johnson, did they install some of this stuff out there?
No, they didn't install it. We have ultralights, ultralight bulbs that have to be replaced. We have huge hot water heaters that have to be serviced.
Cooling towers.
Multiple pumps, humidity conditioners up on top of the building. And as a matter of fact, this, this agreement, probably if we had done this a year ago, would've been two or three times as much. But we trained some of our staff, and they are now doing a lot of the needle work, like changing filters and so forth. So the contract is not near what it could be.
So to that point, we're, it's not just the water. I'm hearing it's the air, everything around it. I mean, when I hear heat and moisture, I think bacteria. I think all those things, corners cracked and stuff. You're just controlling the atmosphere, though. They're not talking about control or cleaning of the building itself then, right? We're just talking about water and the air that comes around the water. I mean, help me understand one more time.
It's the whole system. There's a system to take the humidity out of the air. It's not an air conditioning system in the pool side. It's a humidity system. And it takes the chlorine air out. It takes the humidity out of the pool area. All these pumps that keep the water circulating, the water has to circulate in both pools a certain amount of gallons per day. And all these pumps have to make, we have to make sure that they're pumping the necessary water. The chlorinator has to be putting the exact amount of chlorine in the water to keep it safe. The ultralight, the ultra bulbs that kill all the bacteria that go into the system have to be replaced and make sure they're functioning at the utmost capacity. So that's just a few of the things. I mean, it's a very complex system.
And Gary, if you get an imbalance in any of those, there's probability of having to shut the pool down, is that correct?
Absolutely.
We've had to base that before.
We, yeah, we've had to do that before.
Water temperature, the amount of chlorine and all that other kind of good stuff.
Mr. Chairman, to begin my last point or comment, is does it, we charge user fees out here. Do we, is it free for county, county residents, but for everybody else they have to charge? Are we able to maintain this, you know, at a break even, or are we having to carry this?
The answer is no.
We would love for it to break even. We don't break even on any of that.
We did very well, as a matter of fact.
It's a lot better than it was when we first opened the center out there, no doubt.
Right, 'cause there was no revenue coming in.
Right, right. And we never jarred. There is a fee, and the fee for out-of-county residents is higher than in-county residents.
That's correct. Both, we make a lot of money off swim lessons. When we first started, we had outside people coming in, teaching our swim lessons.
Yes.
But we changed that to train our people, our lifeguards and our people, to teach the swim lessons. Therefore, instead of keeping twenty percent of the money and paying out eighty, we're keeping eighty and paying out twenty. So that's, that's been a big turnaround as far as our revenue.
Is it still a challenge, Gary, to hire lifeguards?
Uh, it is.
And they're getting a lot of college students to do that.
It's getting better. We've formed some relationships with, in particular, West Georgia College. We get a lot of our lifeguards. We would rather have college students rather than, although we've got some good high school students as well, but we would rather have a couple of years more of maturity from the, from the college students and they do a good job.
Yes, ma'am.
Gary, how much does an out-of-county resident have compared to in-county? I'm just asking.
I don't really, no, I don't have those in front of me. We set those a couple of years ago. But to your question, it's probably time that we revisit that and look at it to see what the ratio is between a county resident and an out-of-county.
Yeah, especially for the out-of-county, but...
I don't remember exactly what it was. It was a lot more.
I thought it was like five dollars.
We increased it.
I thought it was just like five dollars.
I'll get those numbers and get them to you.
Okay. And one other question. How many swim teams from the high schools utilize the facility?
We first started, just background, when we first started, there was no swim teams. And then after a couple of years, they put, they started taking students from all the high schools and forming one swim team. And now I think all of them have swim teams.
Yes, they do.
All the high schools have swim teams.
Now, we just furnish it for the in-county schools.
Yes. And we also lease lanes to, if we have the time, we will lease lanes to the private schools as well. All, all the schools pay to use the lanes. And we also have our stingrays and our private swim clubs that also use. The place is overrun with, with people wanting to use the pool now. It's far different than what it was eight years ago when we first started programming this center. People are always wanting to come to the Aquatic Center, and we just don't have the lane to, because it's, it's full all the time.
And Gary, when you have those meets down there, you completely fill up that park with parking on the grass and everywhere else.
That's right.
So a lot of people, yes.
This fifty-three, does it, does it, I mean, does it cover any filter costs? Or we still provide filters and all these other things that maybe they may find that there may be a piece of problem that we will have to pay for? Can you put it, put it in, some fluid and things?
The filter, yes. The filter part, a lot of that we're doing.
Okay.
This is more or less checking the, the stuff that we don't have the ability to do.
Got it.
Like if there's a gauge that they have to have to check something like a temperature on a water heater or a pump to make sure that pump is pumping gallons per minute it should be able to pump. Those are the kind of things. This is just the, coming out and paying their people. If there's a part or something that has to be replaced, that's above what this is all about.
Now, how often will they come though? Either when you guys call them, or is it once a quarter?
No, they'll, they'll come on a regular basis.
We have a schedule. It's part of the contract. Got it, got it. And that schedule, this is a what, quarterly?
Uh, it is quarterly. They can learn from different, Pool Pack is, is the large system that actually filtrates the water and everything. And they come out three times a year, and it's based on, when they start, you know, they'll do it three times a year. They do a comprehensive review once a year. They look at the condenser coil once a year. They look at all the belts once a year. Then all the pumps circulating, they come out three times a year. So it's based on the piece of equipment and the number of times they'll actually be on site to look at it.
So anything outside of that, there's additional fee outside of that?
If something breaks and we have to call them out, there's an additional fee.
Yeah.
Yes. This does not cover anything other than just the routine maintenance and lubricating and checking and tightening things. If something breaks and we have to call them out to repair...
So they are gonna be loosening and tightening and pulling stuff.
Oh, yes.
The managers coming and telling you, okay, here's some things you gotta...
No, no, no. They're actually gonna be doing things, but it's, it's maintenance stuff versus repair.
Got it, got it.
For example, if a condenser goes out up on the roof, we have to have a crane come and take that down. And a condenser can be ten, fifty thousand dollars to replace. So of course, that wouldn't be in there.
Understood, understood. Okay. 'Cause I'm assuming they're gonna be probably coming out more during the spring, summer and fall, more so than outside of that. Who's going to late, fall, winter?
Not necessarily. If we don't have a problem, they'll just stick to their schedule. If we have a problem, we'll call them.
Okay, okay. That's all, okay.
Under tab nineteen, authorization to execute an agreement with Alternative Environments on behalf of the Douglas County Transportation for an annual cost of sixteen thousand six hundred and five dollars and sixty-four cents. Mr. Peacock, you're up again.
Yes, sir. This is for the maintenance of the landscaping and the yards and the lawn, for lawn care over at the Rideshare Transportation Center. This covers basic maintenance, mowing, edging, weeding, insect control. It also has pruning, fertilization of weed control, pine straw installation, retention pine maintenance, irrigation startup and shutdown. We got quotes, we've tried to get quotes from eight different vendors here in the county. The one that has been chosen, that gave us the best price and the best coverage of all the things that we wanted is Alternative Environments. And that's who we're asking you guys to allow us to use for lawn care and, over at, and lawn maintenance over at the Rideshare for this year.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Is this just for the transportation facility? Who does all the maintenance up and down Doris Road, the right of way, the senior citizens, the courthouse? Does it...
I think the jail inmates do that.
You don't have any jail inmates to expand?
We haven't been asked to look at it, Commissioner Will. I mean, we, we have a grass cutting crew. Now, of course, there's a limited, they can do lawn and edging and trimming and that thing like that, but they don't have the expertise for, as far as fertilizing, and they don't have the equipment to aerate, do those things. But general grass cutting. And we do about fifteen locations in the county now, so I don't know how much more they can expand, but I would...
Do y'all do the courthouse?
I don't think anymore.
That's been done by Altern, this group, the Rideshare, Alternative Environments, yes.
We do the libraries. We do the dogwood strip. We do the parks. We do, hold it under there.
This group, this group has, has done a fantastic job, especially around the courthouse. You know, you get what you pay for. And the maintenance of not only the courthouse, but the courthouse grounds is very important to make it continue to look like it's new.
Do you do around the nine one one building and the sheriff's office, the entry, whoever did the entry?
They do our grass cutting, ma'am. We still have to do all the beds and the fertilization and the...
Do y'all farm that out for somebody?
Yes, ma'am, as needed.
Just as needed.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I guess a question for, for Bill. Is it plausible or would it make, make sense to talk about they maintain this, this site and we're talking about to the Transportation Center, getting a better price break on a single contract? And can we time a contract review to maybe do that?
We can plan that. It has, it has the, 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 the other locations have, those contracts are already in place, like for the courthouse. This new one is really based, it's kind of already based on a package deal since they're already do, again, it's ridiculously low prices. Sixty thousand sounds a lot, but it's not what we're gonna do. So they gave us a good price for doing the rideshare. But yes, absolutely. One of the things we could look at is trying to consolidate all of the locations. But they, but the thing is, next year, if we look at this again, they may not be the company that actually is the best choice for the county. So we don't wanna tie ourselves into them if there could be a better option next year. But that's a great, that's a great idea.
Good point. Okay. Under tab twenty, authorization to award contract to Benchmark Tuscany, Inc., to conduct and perform repairs and improvements identified as rideshare projects of the Douglas County Multimodal Transportation Center for a total price of hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. Authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending legal review. Mr. Peacock?
Yes, sir. Let me say upfront that these are federal dollars, eighty percent. You will have a twenty percent match for these projects. There are five projects that we bid out. We had seven firms that gave us proposals. We have negotiated with a couple of them and finally have settled on awarding a contract to Benchmark Tuscany for a price of one seventy-four nine ninety-six. The projects are a complete repair of the main building, which has numerous construction issues, all the way from fascia replacement, adding new gutters, or adding gutters that have never been put on there, recaulkings windows, changing up all of, all of the outside lighting at the building. We're gonna be doing a lot of work at the bus pavilion, a lot of cleaning, painting, repair of some of the concrete. We're gonna be doing a lot of landscaping, trimming trees, trimming back some of the canopies to try to get more grass to grow because the trees have become somewhat mature, that they're blocking the sun. Again, more landscaping. We believe again that Benchmark will do a really good job. Again, we've met numerous times with them and re-discussed and discussed the different projects. They totally understand our need. We've agreed that they, the scope of work that they've offered us is in the best interest of the county, and we're asking you guys to allow us to award that con, this contract to Benchmark.
And this was starting, beginning to age a little bit down there.
It, it really needs work.
But it's still very attractive, but we wanted to maintain it that way. So if we're gonna keep the grass cut, we certainly need to maintain the buildings and the systems over there. Yes, sir.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, so I wanna make sure I understand. You say, projects, and they're being defined, defined as five projects. One that you just sort of alluded. What were the rest of them?
I'm sorry, the, the five, I can't, I thought, I think I kinda touched on most of them. Project number one was the main building.
Yes.
Project number two was the, um...
Bus pavilion.
The bus pavilion, I'm sorry. Number three is the walkway from the administration building to the bus pavilion. Number four is parking lot repairs and, and not resurfacing, but resealing. And the last one is landscaping. Those are the five.
Is there a lighting challenge out there? Or we really don't have lighting, cause we're not there and you need to really make a difference?
No, the lighting is good as far as the overall lighting, but we have, let's call it sidewalk lighting, if you will.
Right.
Uh, that are tubular type sidewalk lightings that, uh, have become old, and you can, you can, some of them, you can walk up to them and touch them and they'll fall over, you know? So they're not grounded or very well out there. Uh, so we're, and also the bulbs continue to go out, so we're replacing them with the newer technology, uh, with some better lighting. So it's, it's more lands, it's more, I won't say landscaping, but it's the sidewalk lighting versus the, the highlighting, uh, to highlight all the garage or the parking areas.
Mark, were you here when they, when the Transportation Center was built? What, how long, many years?
Hmm, we moved in two thousand and four.
Came in two thousand and four?
No.
Get a little age on it, these maintenance, yes, ma'am.
Little clarification, you said landscaping. I thought we just approved some landscaping.
Uh, this is...
All right, we just talked about, uh, the landscaping. What's the difference?
The, uh, alternative environments is actually gonna maintain the landscaping. When I say landscaping, they're actually gonna be pruning and cutting shrubs and things like that. This is actually gonna be removal of some trees, some entire trees, restoring rock beds, um, trim, again, all the existing tree canopies back so that, um, that more light will get through to the ground under the trees, you get more grass growth, and, uh, go to all the retention ponds and clean those up because those have not been cleaned up in the last... Well, they have been recently, I think, but they're continuing problem to keep the retention ponds cleaned up.
Bill, you said this was eighty percent federal money, is that correct?
Yes. We, we used to get ten percent from, uh, we used to have to do ten percent, we got ten percent from the state. The state no longer provides their ten percent, so now we have to pay the full twenty percent.
I got, I got links about the Transportation, Bill, when you said, said that. Uh, go ahead.
Where are the, where is this Benchmark Tuscany located? What's their head office?
Douglas County.
Okay. Well, and who are the principals here? Would you have them know?
Skip, um, Kim, Mary, and Kurt. Kurt Boggs. They did the expansion of the senior center. The new building at the senior center.
Yeah, they were a little bitter on that.
They were. They've done several projects around the county.
Okay. Moving right along. Uh, tab number twenty-one, authorization to execute an agreement with JNS Janitorial Services, uh, Douglas County Services, to be performed at the Douglas County Transportation Center at a cost of one thousand dollars per month, plus an additional monthly charge for paper products and soap. And authorize the chairman to sign all related documents.
This is for the, um, cleaning of the Transportation Center, uh, main building. It's for maintaining the restrooms and the floors and vacuuming and dusting and all the things that have to be done to keep that center clean. Uh, we had, uh, prices from five companies. Um, we, uh, spent a lot of time there evaluating each one, getting some references, and JNS Janitorial, uh, is the company that we think would do the best job for us out there. Uh, they're not the existing company. We're actually not satisfied with the existing company that's out there, that's why we're doing this. Uh, so we're asking you guys to allow the chairman to sign a new, a new contract, or a contract with, uh, JNS for the janitorial services out at the Rideshare, over at the Rideshare Building.
Comments, questions? All right. Uh, tab twenty-two, authorization to issue and...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't say, a quick question on that one. This contract we just did with JNS, is it something that we should do as part of our annual? Is this sort of new, or, like, we have annual contracts right at the beginning of the year that we try to keep on a cycle. Is this part of that process? Is this sort of a...
All of our contracts are not on January to decent recycles. Depends on, uh, like, when the rideshare initially needed, uh, janitorial services probably was not at the first of the year. Uh, so we, all of our contracts are not based on January to decent recycles. Uh, in this particular case, it, it's really a decision that we no longer want to use the existing service. So that's what's causing us to do this now, uh, to go out and get a new, try to find a new vendor to do the service.
There's no penalty of getting out of that, that service.
What, what I do want to do on this particular contract is just run it through the end of the year.
Right.
Exactly. This is a nine-month contract.
Yeah, flatter them, Mr. Chairman. Have you seen the...
Absolutely, and, and my mind was churning as well. You know, I think it's probably something, Bill, that we need to take a look at. You know, we've taken over the maintenance of the courthouse with our own staff. Uh, we need to take a look and review, would it be beneficial for us to hire more people to in-house and to do that ourselves instead of hiring, you know, farming it out? It may not be, maybe cheaper to, to, to do an outside firm, but...
We do have an outside firm that comes into the courthouse every evening and cleans every evening, uh, over and above what our own staff does.
Okay, and it's not JNS?
It is not JNS.
Okay. Okay, we just need to do that and make sure that we're, we're handling this correctly. Okay, thank you, Bill.
Yes, sir.
Uh, under tab twenty-two, authorization to issue an invitation to bid for towing services to be provided to the Douglas County Sheriff's Department.
Uh, Sheriff Miller, Sheriff Miller, on the stand, sent a request to purchasing asking that we, um, issue a bid for towing services. Today, it's all done, today they use eleven different towing services that they rotate on a, on a weekly basis, and there's a variety of different companies that can provide a variety of different towing services. Uh, the sheriff wants to place this service up for bid to try to get the best cost that he can because he's paying different prices, he's paying different rates for different companies, as well as they wanna look to see if there are other benefits that the towing companies can offer to the sheriff's department over and above just towing. Uh, and I, if you wanna give some suggestions or ideas about what it is we're talking about, I'd be happy for you to do that.
Yes, no, that's fine. Thank you. Commissioner, what it is, as Bill said, we right now have eleven towing services on a rotating basis. Uh, they are under very strict guidelines that the sheriff, uh, which I provided, Bill, as part of the package, as far as insurance, markings, um, fees that they can charge, uh, having a large wrecker, uh, in the event, being on-call exclusively for us, uh, in the event of an emergency, a lot of things like that. Eleven has just gotten overwhelming. We can't, we can't watch over eleven companies to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do. Uh, plus, some charge this, some charge that, so what we're trying to do is narrow that down to two or three towing companies on a rotation, uh, see what benefit, uh, they will provide. The department may be towing patrol cars, uh, or towing vehicles for the sheriff's office at no cost or at a reduced cost, things like that. Uh, because we do a lot of impounds, uh, so you reduce it down to two or three towing companies, and those companies, um, based on the amount of business we'll provide, it'll be much more lucrative for those companies than these eleven on rotation, so that's, that's where we're at.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. I wasn't gonna say a thing on this one, okay.
Well, you're gonna bid it out, and so it'll be to the local towing companies?
Well, it will, yes, we'll make sure the local towing, but, uh, you know, it doesn't make sense. If you get too far away, it doesn't make sense for the towing company, but we'll bid those in a cursory, maybe Austell, Boricca, Carrollton, you know, that would wanna provide services, but they have a minimum requirement of time to be on scene. If we have, if, if I need a wrecker, I'm not gonna wait for one to come out, marry it up.
Uh, one thing that I've noticed, uh, as a citizen, I guess, is the debris left after an accident. Who's responsible for picking up the debris?
The towing company.
Uh, well, somebody's not doing a good job.
You're right. And that's part of the, and that's part of what...
I mean, that'd be glass forever.
And it's very hard for us to monitor that, however, usually that's state patrol. So those are, after accidents, that's, the state patrol has to require their towing companies to do that, not the ones in, uh, where we're involved as far as working the accident.
So if it's a city street, is it, um...
Still state patrol, it's their wrecker.
If there's an accident...
There's an accident regardless if it's in the city, of course, city of Douglasville and their requirements, but if it's in a county and the state patrol handles it, then it's up to the state patrol's wrecker service to be required to do that. If we work the accident, we require them to broom it, uh, and then sweep up the large pieces. Now, you know, there's, you can't sweep up everything, but get the large pieces.
I'm talking about mirrors and things like that laying on the side of the road after an accident forever, and, uh, could we just ask that the state patrol, could we send a little letter and say, could you remind your towing companies to clean that?
I'd be glad. The best means would be Villarica commander, let him do that.
All right, thank you.
Stan, I, I sure hope y'all, I know you're gonna choose two or three, um, but I hope you get a good rotation process here because, you know, the phone starts ringing about, well, you know, I was supposed to be, be on-call this time and then somebody else got the call and, and I know, it's dependent on what's available when the call comes in, is that correct?
Well, now, when they're on-call for us for their week, we take priority of whatever they have, and they understand that, but again, it's hard for us to manage eleven. I can manage two or three, and if they don't wanna be part of it after we've, they've been issued, uh, then they'll only be two because we can, you know? But, uh, doing that for eleven is, that's beginning to be the problem, you know? They're supposed to be available for citizens to get their vehicles on the weekends, and we get complaints, and, and, and like I say, it's just a management issue. If we can get down to a manageable, then we'll manage.
Okay. Just one question. So do you have to give a guy that the eleven or, or eight or nine, is you're gonna be kinda discontinuing that services, is there any kind of notice that we have to give any guys?
Not that we have to, but we will, of course. Uh, once we, we'll put a committee together, once the two or three are chosen, then we'll give notice to all our other wrecker services, probably ninety days or six days, you know, then, then once you end this rotation, that it'll be reduced to these.
Yes, sir. Got it. Okay. Yes, sir.
Quick question, Chief, um, so roughly, what's the estimate of, of towing that we have, just in general? I know there's probably different categories of it, but, like, for example, I think if there's eleven currently servicing us and we're gonna consolidate basically, consolidating, um, down to three, which is concentrating the business, no problem, they'll work through that on their own, but, that being said, which means they don't have to ramp, if it's currently eleven, you can push it down to two or three, they better have the bandwidth to support you, to your point. I guess my question is, how much volume do we currently have coming through anyway? Roughly, and I know it's, it changes every week if you want to say.
It does. Uh, we probably average about thirty-five, uh, to forty vehicles impounded a month.
Okay.
So, uh, on average, uh, now, of course, if we have a more concentration, you know, I think in our last big, um, safety checkpoint, we impounded sixty-six vehicles at night, so, you know, uh, and of course, the wrecker services on-call had four wreckers there for us, uh, you know, so they could just rotate them and, and go with them.
I do have one little, one, one last question.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I mean, it was more of a, I just wanna get a feel for the volume, and, and if you're saying you feel comfortable that there's two of the firms that can handle what currently eleven rotators are, have, I, again, I'm just more sensitive to your, I'm on your side, so, okay, they better be able to handle this, but that's, you know, assuming that we're that busy, you know, for us, it's busy for us, um, by pushing it down to two or three, they, management style, they, they've gotta be able to scale and handle this, especially if they take...
Well, they are, but even they'll, the eleven are still on a weekly rotation, so whenever it comes in, it's wrecker service, A this week, B this week.
Got it.
So we don't call upon the eleven, uh, except like during the ice storm, we called three major ones, and we told them, uh, your hours for the duration, your, like, they're not, your hours for the duration, and, you know, put them out, uh, for what we need.
I got you, yeah. We're good. Thanks, sir.
Okay. Let me just finish up on this last little question. If, if, is there a, a set fee or, or an average fee or that, the three, once you narrow it down, would there be some kinda like, if you guys call them from Douglas County, then this is the, the fee scale schedule or whatever that is, and, and you said they need to be available on weekends as well, so...
Right, right. No, sir, we, uh, well, we, we do have a, we wanna see their fee schedule, not only for towing, um, and for storage, how much they charge for storage, but, uh, we have a whole, we have a five or six-page document that they're required to let us inspect as far as their insurance and their, uh, their impound lot, uh, this requirement of letting people in on the weekends or get, or if we impound a car and you've got personal property in it, they have to give you a chance to go get your personal property out, things like that.
So there won't be a, a fee schedule of, you know, each company have, when, when you guys call them, they can only charge fifty dollars to...
No, sir, no, we wanna, but we were, we will be reviewing their fees, cause a lot, most of the people, I say most, a great deal are county citizens, so we don't want them, and we wanna see their fee schedule as part of the bid, what their fee schedule is to tow a car, uh, because they can range, some of them are ridiculous sometimes.
Right, right. So, so, so you'd be trying to look out for, for those that are in Douglas County and write that they, they charge some astronomical fees, and you probably won't be looking at those guys as a serious...
That's true.
...part of this rotation.
Right. We're not trying to, but we don't make anything off this, the department or the county, other than, uh, see what they'll do for us as far as a department to have the privilege of pulling for us, so, you know, we might save some taxpayer money by them pulling patrol cars for the transmission shop, making them cost or something like that.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, under tab twenty-three, authorization to award contract to Ten Eight Fire and Safety Equipment Inc. for the purchase of a new piece of fire apparatus, which would be a pumper truck, at a total price of three hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars for the Douglas County Fire Department, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Buying a new fire truck, Bill?
Yes, sir, we are. We sent out an invitation to bid back in January. Uh, we received three bids, uh, one from Fireline Inc., one from Southern Fire, and Ten Eight actually submitted four different options, uh, and of those four options, after we evaluated all the, the equipment on each of these, um, apparatus, it was decided that Ten Eight's option two best, uh, met our needs. It's also a truck that's gonna be available in a very short time, uh, within thirty to forty-five days, so it's, it's an opportunity for us to get a truck in here very quickly rather than wait to have one actually built off a production line and it take anywhere from a hundred and twenty to two hundred and forty days to actually get that built. So, um, we're asking that the, um, commission allow us to award the contract to Ten Eight for the option two fire truck that they provided to us.
Chief, you got anything to add to that?
It's needed, and we're looking forward to getting one. It'll be replacing, uh, engine number five, Chapel Hill.
Okay, that engine will go into reserve and, and then replace that one?
Yes.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Uh, I'll address this to the chief, I guess. All right. Is this the one that we approved in the two thousand thirteen, I think?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
We're just not getting it.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, do we have, uh, how many ambulances are you short?
Uh, we got nine ambulances right now.
We're not short, are we?
Yeah, we're, we're not short, I mean...
Well, some of them are back, are they not?
Yes, ma'am. We, we ran six frontline ambulances, uh, and the rest are reserve ambulances.
Okay. How many fire trucks are we short?
We're, we've got fire trucks in every station, so, so we're, we're not short either. Uh, we got two reserve fire trucks right now.
Yeah, I just keep hearing that we need new equipment, we need new equipment. Some of the trucks are, are on their last leg, I think, so, uh, are there any more plans to order more trucks for this year?
Yes, ma'am. We, we were approved in this year's budget to lease purchase a truck, uh, and we've already started that process, we're working with Mr. Peacock now to get that done.
So we're gonna lease one?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, now, if I recollect correctly, seven hundred thousand was approved in two thousand thirteen for the truck.
That's, that's plausible.
No, this was budget money. It wasn't half, it wasn't half...
I don't, I don't think that's correct, but...
It was seven hundred thousand at one time, uh, when we approved the budget, so I'm So I'm just saying, what happened to the rest of it? Three hundred thousand. Well, five hundred thousand is what is part of this.
Budget, this one.
Yeah, for that truck, and then, um, the seven hundred thousand had to reduce to five hundred thousand. Correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, when we were doing budget cuts, is that what it was?
Yes.
We had to shave some of that, so it was reduced to five hundred thousand. But you're gonna be getting another one this year.
Yes, ma'am.
How long will that take?
Uh, we plan on doing it, uh, kind of like we did this, uh, get one that's already built, uh, ready to go.
Now, how does the lease work compared to purchasing? Because, I mean, I know what a lease is, but is it an old piece of equipment?
No.
Is it brand new? And at the end of the lease, how long is it?
It's a lease purchase.
Lease purchase.
We're actually leasing it to purchase, we're gonna be making annual payments against the purchase.
Ordinarily over a four-year period.
Four-year period, and, uh, at the end of the lease?
We own the equipment.
We own it?
Yes, outright lease purchase.
Okay, so we don't have to, uh, we don't trade it in and get another?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
And they maintain it during that?
For the, at least for the three years, or whatever the maintenance.
Well, depending on, on, on what the, the warranty is, they, they maintain the warranty issues, I mean, they're not gonna replace tires if we wear tires out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
What you have to realize on our fire equipment is that over the last ten years or so, we've purchased with SPOSS dollars, twelve to fourteen million, or some, somewhere in that ballpark, twelve to fourteen million dollars worth of equipment. That's how we finance that. We're not short on any ambulances or fire trucks. Would we like to have one at every station? Yes, we would, but that's not too realistic. We're running out, we've run out of SPOSS dollars now, and, and the decision this board will have to make is do we want to go to the public and ask them to continue financing fire and fire equipment with SPOSS dollars? If we do it through general fund dollars, uh, we're gonna be doing a lot of lease purchasing, because we can't afford, uh, you know, a ladder truck that costs almost a million dollars.
Yes, sir.
So, um, this decision we're gonna have to make, do we want to go to the public and ask them to continue, as they've done over the last ten or twelve years, is to purchase fire and emergency service equipment? And, and this is a number of other pieces of equipment that we bought with SPOSS dollars. And I wouldn't hear when that SPOSS was passed, but I think they made a good decision in, in paying for it as they, uh, it was pay-as-you-go, and, uh, and this fire equipment wears out awfully quick, really. So, uh, we gotta replace it in some means, and, uh, I think we asked the public, do you want to finance it that way instead of through the public? So that's a decision this board will have to make in future.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a real direction, simple question, uh, the truck that you're retiring, uh, what is the mileage on it? Realize the engine time doesn't necessarily equate to mileage, but, uh.
Commissioner, I can't tell you today, I mean, I, I find out for you.
Okay.
But it, it's, it's a nineteen ninety-eight model truck. So, uh, it's been in service quite a while, it was actually the last truck that Chief Arrington purchased while he was fire chief.
Okay, so we get the goodie out of them?
Yes, sir, uh, we, we run them into the ground, uh, Gary can attest to, uh, we've got trucks in the shop all the time, uh, we send them to, to different places to be fixed, uh, unfortunately, those, those trucks require to do a lot of hard work.
Sure. I'm gonna ask, one of the duties of our new administrator is gonna be to sit down with, with the chief, and let's come up with a ten or twelve-year plan on replacing the equipment that we have in the house now, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, I, I think back to your point, if, if, at some point, there has to be a, a policy discussion from a fiscal perspective. If, if currently, we believe that, and, and Mr. Chairman, use your point, historically, we had a pay-as-you-go, that was when life was great, and we could carry itself.
Yes. Yes.
Um, we're, we're not in the land of milk and honey anymore, we're still coming out of recession, um, slowly. That being said, if our current policy is that we want to get off tans, and because we, we borrowed sixteen million dollars, and there's cost of money for that, right, so we take sixteen million dollars, we want to save the interest on that, we want to say, well, should we pay for a million-dollar trucks? You know, which has interest on it, and it's a trade-off, right? It's either your policy's focused on reducing the, the focus on tans, or it's focused on paying for capital equipment. You don't have a choice, it's, it's either or, you can't do both, so, at some point, Mr. Chairman, I think we are gonna have to sit down and have a real hard conversation on how we, we pay for capital. I don't, you know, whatever the capital is, whether it's fire, whether it's transportation, if, if this, if we get a very hard conversation we're gonna have to have sooner than later, you know, just more of a state.
Well, we'll, we'll have Mark, that'll be one of his first assignments, as the county administrator, come up with a plan. Uh, again, um, a SPOSS is the answer, it's easier for me that, when I pay a property tax, it's easier for me to pay a little bit as I go, instead of paying a, a big hundred at the end of the year. So, uh, we will ask the public if that's something they will support, and before we decide whether we're gonna have a SPOSS, when our current SPOSS, uh, is over, um, I think we go to the public with a number of meetings throughout the county, and let's hear from the public and see what they think.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Okay, number twenty-four, authorization to issue an invitation to bid for countywide shoulder maintenance for approximately two hundred and sixty miles of county roads, Mr. Peacock?
Yes, sir, this is the second time we would have issued a invitation to bid for the maintenance of the county, uh, road shoulder. This is grass cutting, it's for three cycles of wide-of-way mowing, uh, for approximately two hundred and sixty miles of county roads. We also have the option to, um, to, to add or remove some cycles, or have different ropes, um, mowed at different times. Like, this company, whoever wins this bid, will have to provide all materials, labor, equipment for mowing, including a brush and slope trimming, so that's what this bid will be for.
Okay, yes.
I can just offer my, uh, Kirk's own opinion, if my head is saying, uh, the, a lot of our roads look a lot better now. With contracting, I think the labor intensive, these, some of these contractors come out there with six, eighteen people, and they have the process of, of picking up trash, limbing, I mean, they cut the, so, they cut the, the shoulders, basically all the way to the rough line.
They do.
Come out and chipper, you know, if need be, and then mow the grass with the zero turn, not just bushhogs, throwing dirt and clots and everything out the road, but actually the industrial-type yard, zero-turn mowers, and it really looks good, a lot of our roads look like parkways. It's much more than we could do as a county with our staff.
Uh, the current contractors love and contracting, and they've been doing a great job for us, so they've lasted.
Absolutely, Randy and I met with, uh, the tributary people one day last week, and that was some of the comments that they made, that the wide-of-way can be handled a lot better, so, uh, I think they are doing a good job.
Okay, yes, sir.
Regarding, let me make sure I get this right, so approximately two hundred and sixty miles of county roadways, so that's linear, like, so this, for example, if we're resurfacing all of Douglas County, we're talking about this number right here, two hundred and sixty?
That's not all of it, uh, this is not within subdivisions or anything like that, this is just county maintained roads.
Right.
Not state roads, you know, just county maintained roads.
County maintained, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Including the system we just, we just negotiated for.
Uh, yes, 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 ma'am.
And this doesn't have anything to do with this, but I just wanted to kind of expand, do we have signs? I've never seen a sign about throwing trash out the window or whatever. Do we have anything in place right now to cut down on the debris where people just toss things out the window? And when they cut it, it multiplies.
I think we probably have signs that say, that say that there are financial penalties for littering.
But this group does send people out first to pick up before they cut the rideaway.
They do.
That's, of course, that don't always happening, and I know what you're talking about.
Well, I think for people that's throwing it out the window, I'll, I'll be held responsible for it.
I do tell you that, where is this, can't you stand still here?
I guess he may.
No, they're not.
I guarantee you, throw a cup out the window, and you have to, you know, pay a fine, and you have to, it's about a month.
There's nothing posted, I, I don't see anything posted. Look, Chairman DOT, they're the ones that should be posting it if y'all want to go.
We have a sign, partially, if y'all want to make them fine.
Do we have an ordinance, I'm, I'm asking?
Uh, I'm sure we have an ordinance, but I don't think, I don't have a sign with any litter signs out. But we can check and see where any can make some, if y'all would like to do that.
All right.
All right. Uh, number twenty-five, authorization to execute, uh, an agreement with Hughes Ray Company Inc. to provide professional land serving services for a total price of seven thousand eight hundred dollars for the Douglas County Animal Shelter, Douglas County Animal Services Department, subject to final legal review.
Yes, sir, this is the next step in, uh, the, uh, development of the new animal shelter. We require a survey, uh, of the couple bracket survey for the four-point-five acre area that, uh, we'll be using for, uh, the new animal shelter. We also require a survey of the, of macro wide-of-way, uh, as well as private utility locating and marking. So this is the next step before we can actually complete the mechanicals, or have the mechanical drawings completed for the shelter. So this is, again, the last survey that we would need prior to actually getting the final drawings done for the shelter, okay?
Yes.
Okay, all right, um, quick question, so there's currently some, I guess, some, I don't know, lack of better word, roping or taping around out there at Girlet, can you tell them what's going on with that? Or Martin, could you speak to that?
The, uh, risk and safety, look at the steps out there, the steps going up from the parking lot to the family front center are rotten, and they are safety hazard, so.
There's timber, there's the old road ties.
There are road ties, tough to shoot them, so we closed that off because of the, uh, because of the safety issue.
Are you, the safety of just steps maybe crumbling, or because of rattlesnakes, like the hide and timber and stuff like that?
I guess more because of them, they're crumbling.
Right, okay.
They're, they're in bad shape.
Okay, so that work has nothing to do with the work associated with the, I mean, that safety restriction around that area has nothing to do with the actual animal shelter?
No, sir.
I guess I'll follow on that, if I have a question to make, Chairman. Gary, uh, what, what is happening with those, uh, are you aware of the, the step issue there at the, at the family center? And what is, what's at work?
Yes, we, we have, uh, the putt-putt golf has deteriorated over the years, it was not a quality constructed putt-putt in the beginning, so, uh, finally, it got to the point where it was just a maintenance nightmare. We could, we could spend all of our people all the time up there trying to maintain it, keep it up, but, uh, we, we certainly, uh, didn't want anyone to get hurt, so we put a fence around it until which time is the animal shelter construction was, uh, to begin.
What about the steps, though, what are we talking about, the steps?
Yeah, they're, they're in bad shape, uh, that's, that's why we blocked them off.
You still have access to the facility, I figured?
Oh, yeah, there, there's a completely different set of steps that go up to the building.
Okay.
This is.
We're about playground.
Yes, this is to go down into the putt-putt golf.
Okay, where are they going, these, uh, all right, I, I got you.
Thank you.
Um, tab twenty-six, uh, authorization to bend the planning and zoning board a budget for RF Engineer Tele, Telecommunication Tower Application Evaluation. Who puts this thing together, I can't even read all of it. Okay, Tracy?
Yes, we received two applications for telecommunications consideration for May agenda, um, and we need to, um, form out their review for technical assistance with R F engineers required in our code. Applicant bears a complete cost of this, they paid their application fee, and out of that application fee, they need six thousand per application transferred to other professional services to pay our RF engineer for this analysis.
This is in and out money, then?
In and out.
How you pay it?
You go.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, thank you. Uh, the items twenty-seven through thirty are approval of commissioner expenses, uh, that concludes the agenda, yes, sir.
I have one, I want, I have one that I want to discuss.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, and this is, we didn't have a chance last time to talk about this, but I guess, Mr. Chairman, do we have any more comments that we want to talk about regarding, um, House Bill one seventy? I know Cross River was just passed Friday, um, for the most part, um, they're, um, the impact on the transportation deal that's currently draft, are we satisfied, do you think any more comments need to be submitted to the Senate side? Because we have windows such as now.
Good question, Commissioner, and, you know, I don't know, once the Senate finishes, uh, with this bill, I don't know if it's gonna even resemble, uh, what we've seen through the House. From what I hear, we have to worry about, well, not worry about, we have to consider the changes that might be made. You're talking about some type of taxes on real estate transactions, we're talking about increased taxes on tobacco products. I don't know if they'll change the twenty-nine point two cents, uh, down to the twenty-four cents, which would impact about three hundred million dollars of, of the revenue projected. So I don't, uh, you know, I, I know these House bill, the, the introducer of the House bill was before the Senate Committee, uh, on Friday, I think, and I've not heard anything yet. You might have heard more than I have as far as what's going on with it, but I think we have to hold our breath and, and just wait and see. I had a Transportation Air Quality Committee meeting last week, and, uh, the members wanted to pass a resolution in support of something, uh, or to send a letter to the Senate. My suggestion to them, and we didn't do it, but my suggestion to them would be pass a resolution adopting the House, House Bill one seventy. Uh, it was something that we finally could agree on, it was something ACCG, uh, supported, and GMA as well, I think. Both of them supported it.
Okay.
But I don't know, I don't know, I don't know where we go here, other than contact our senators and say, you know, we can, we can support the House bill, but I don't know about all these other things that might happen to them.
To my point, uh, with current House bill, let's say, the impact on the county, and, and work that was done by your staff, Jennifer Hollins' group, it was, um, went to change from the, um, I guess, motor vehicle over to an excise tax, there's gonna be about a one-point-six million dollar hit to us in the original version. They changed it to, to, um, to make it more of a one-point-two-five local option sales tax that we'd be able to get. I think we walked away with about two million dollars, roughly, two million dollars in our general, I mean, into our general fund, uh, to make up, to make us whole for the lost in the loss. At the same point, it allowed us to double the, um, the money that we would have available for resurfacing to around nine hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, an additional million, so we would be doubling. So on average, that's probably about, um, for us, road mileage, around twenty-four miles an hour, Mr. Chairman, consistently. So we went from an average of about fourteen, based on my analysis, up to around twenty-four miles consistently, every year.
I think that, I think that's correct, uh, maybe increase that a little more if, uh, if, if they leave the bill as it is now, I think they'll pick out fifty to seventy percent more L M I G money.
Which is great, so Dean, my final question is, in our analysis, do we ever consider that nine eighty-one, that, is it a thirty percent match? That we have to provide against the, the money that we get for L M I G?
From what I understand from Randy, it just depends on the condition of the road that you're resurfacing, um.
You're getting, you're getting dollars based on how many road, centerline road mile you have.
Right.
There's, there's no match there.
There's no match?
No.
So the match is only with other capital stuff, money due, or other projects that are related to resurfacing.
Right.
Okay, so where is that money located? For example, I get, I lost, we got two million, and then I get that L M I G, road surfacing, resurfacing. What about the other money, other capital needs that we may have for transportation? For example, transit buses, all of that, or anything else, bridges, where's that at? Because that L M I G is just for resurfacing, right? So where's the allocation, I'm just curious, where's the allocation, the rest of the money?
Gary, Gary, Ronnie got grants all the time to get the, uh, these federal dollars that pay for some of those, some of those grants. Uh, I appreciate the letter I got from you, Gary, I guess it was before the end of the week, regarding, uh, a committee, or a study group to get together and, uh, see what we can do as far as providing additional transportation infrastructure and, and services to our citizens, uh, but all, all that federal money comes, it's coming from grants.
Can I ask the question on the House bill, uh, did they reduce it down to twenty-four from twenty-nine?
No, they, they, there were two amendments, both failed, so it's still twenty-nine point two.
It was revenue neutral, they, they were telling us when we were down there, at a day.
Right, right. I, I don't know if it goes to twenty-four, is that, is it still revenue neutral?
That's what someone told me.
We don't want to change it, we're gonna get the last one we've got now.
Yeah, that's your. You gotta be careful when a state says, uh, revenue neutral, it might be their revenue. Their one, their one, us tax, yes, for, uh, and when really, it's, it's a state function, uh, but in, in that context, not entirely. So I just, I was always concerned when they're talking about revenue, they're talking about their revenue, not the county's, we're going the wrong way.
It's my understanding we're giving an update possibly today.
I would expect it today.
I, I, from what I've heard, that the Senate said they would have a bill by next Wednesday, is what I've heard, that's just rumors that I've heard. Yeah. So, uh, I, I don't know, Commissioner, I guess we just have to wait and see, and see what comes out of this thing. It's difficult to raise an additional billion dollars with the same revenue strength that you have today, whether you call it sales tax, or whether you call it excise tax, it's difficult to raise additional dollars without raising taxes.
Right.
And, uh, so that's what they don't want to do. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, but the good thing about this, if you follow the math, right, it used to be one cent and one penny, basically, right? And you're shifting over to gas, which I think, I think is a great idea, I get, I get the excise, I get how they're rolling it, but it was, it went from one cent to three cent, it wasn't one one, it's one to three, so it just expanded, so I'm looking at, okay, so we're, 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 we're putting the counties and the cities, we're struggling over a billion dollars, right, for resurfacing, we've got to distribute it, and again, that's assuming that you got them, you know, whatever you need so to make it work. But where's the rest of the cash? And so that's the part where I'm like, okay, so I get the resurfacing, you've got to focus on resurfacing roads for roads, but I'm like, we've got other needs too, how are we going to pay for the rest of this? And I guess, if you get the whole point of the SPOSS, what we can use it for, this whole, I guess this is one question I didn't get answered, was if there is a SPOSS, was just, and maybe it was just the East SPOSS, there was a requirement that we had to set aside a certain amount of money in our SPOSS that was dedicated for transportation, and so I don't know.
Any SPOSS, yeah.
I don't know if they've told us what that is yet, Mr. Chairman, or it hasn't been defined yet, I'm not a Commissioner or something.
They expanded the definition of transportation to where you could actually fund salaries, like Randy Housley, salaries for studies that ran out, so I think that was a plus for by expanding the definition of what transportation dollars are.
Right, so within the SPOSS itself, like, for example, right now, let's just use SPOSS, hundred, hundred million dollars or current SPOSS, and we got to share it with our other jurisdictions, but out of that, let's say we left with seventy-five, you know, for the sake of conversation, are you telling me that twenty-five percent of that has to be dedicated to transportation? Like, what is the requirement, what is the condition, everything has conditions, so what is the condition, have they defined that? Have they told us that if you do a SPOSS, you shall put aside ten percent that must be exclusively for transportation, capital projects, et cetera?
There is a number in there, I don't remember, do you remember?
It was based on three years, average.
Well, I think, that's right, that's right.
But the truth of the matter is, I think we could cover the requirement just by, just by the salaries and studies that we do through our transportation department, I don't think we'd be, of course, we as a board, the way we have budgeted over the last couple of
years, we would budget more than that because we put a million and a half in last year and a million this year.
We should be fine.
So we would cover that part of that, that bill, unless it changes some, to some other number.
Probably will.
Yeah, they probably will.
But the confusion is, goes from, excise tax is based on per gallon, where the sales tax is based on each dollar, so it takes about three dollars, well, I think they had three point three eight as an average, yeah, per gallon.
Just wait and see, and hold your breath and pray your last before, before the session ends.
I just hope it hits.
Yeah, all right, anything else? Do we need the exacting session today?
Yeah, I'll have you down.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.